It being six o'clock, I call the February two thousand and twenty-two Town of Clayton Planning Board Meeting to order. For roll call, all of the board members are present, except for Board Member Liskum. This is the reminder to all to speak clearly and loudly as possible into the microphone. I will try to remind people as we go along if it becomes hard to hear, and hopefully, I don't offend you if I ask you to speak a little lighter. Item two on the agenda, are there any adjustments to the agenda? Okay, that being said, if there are none, we'll move on to item three, approval of the minutes. Are there any corrections to the minutes needed? If there are none, we will, sorry, if not, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to accept.
Motion to accept the minutes.
Motion to approve by Board Member Powers. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Dupree. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. We're going to move on now to item number five, new business. The next item on the, the next item on the agenda is five A, two thousand and twenty-one, one six five RZ, front O'Neill Street rezoning. We are now here for staff.
Good evening, members of the board. Today, we're hearing about the Hearth Point Development rezoning project. Currently, it is, is located off the corner of O'Neill Street and Front Street, as you can see on the map of the information in front of you. It's this tiny little shaped parcel that's currently vacant. It's about point one two nine acres right now. If we look at the current zoning, we can see that it's surrounded by, right now, our R six, which is residential, and it's most adjacent to it. The proposed rezoning of it will fit perfectly fine, as it will match the additional, the adjacent properties that are R six as well. We find that it is consistent and it is comprehensive with our growth plan. It allows for infilling of important needs by potentially having a place where we can build single-family residential, or perhaps with other steps to have more, more dense filling, to get people back in downtown, and kind of get people shopping, living and, living and breathing on our main street. If we look at the future land use map, we can see that it corresponds with our downtown neighborhood area, and then our downtown support area, so that we don't see, foresee any kind of potential issues that'll come from that. Again, we think it will just support and kind of enhance that as it goes forward. Currently, the staff is recommending approval for this current rezoning request.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff?
Yes, sir.
Board Member Powers.
One, one question I have, and I've, I've looked at this in the, in the agenda and on the material. What is being presented or proposed here that was not proposed a year and a half or so ago?
I'm not sure exactly what was proposed about a year and a half ago. I apologize for that. I am relatively new. Right now, I believe, it's currently zoned for business, and right now, it's sitting vacant, so the problem is because of its size, it may detract business from going in there. In addition, that there's so many requirements that we have for our downtown area, that we might be able to fit a residential spot in there a bit easier, or have more accommodation for, to get people also visiting, living, and kind of being down there.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Are we still sanitizing the stand?
Sorry?
Are we still sanitizing the stand? Next, can we hear from the applicant?
Good evening, David DeYoung with Hearth Point Development, located at one fourteen West Main Street. We are here tonight requesting the rezoning to R six. We agree with staff's recommendation of approval, and I am happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions of the applicant? Thank you. Are there any public comments on this matter? If not, I'll...
Apologies, sorry about that. Just wanted to mention that per Article seven of our UDC, as well as the one sixty D of the general statutes, it, it's, the board shall adopt a consistency statement with whatever recommendation you choose to make. The consistency statement, I recommend, just referencing this slide here, which is why we included it, so this is just a screen capture from our growth plan, and so should you choose to recommend adoption or denial, you can just reference this slide. So, just wanted to mention that.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to the board for consideration. Are there any comments from the board? Board Member Begley?
Yes, I just wanted to mention, I recall that we visited this property a while ago. I don't have the timeline on it, but we, I believe it was to put eight units there, and I do just want to say, I feel like this might be a better fit for the area and the land use at this time, so I would say it would be a good, a good thing to go for.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board? If not, I'll entertain a motion to either recommend or not recommend rezoning five A, two thousand and twenty-one dash one six five RZ dash front O'Neill Street rezoning to the town council.
It's a little bit of a mouthful, but I'll try to get it right. I recommend that we approve the rezoning of five A, two thousand and twenty-one dash one six five RZ, front and O'Neill Street rezoning.
Are you going to recommend the consistency with the comprehensive growth plan, twenty forty-five?
I am. Do I need to read all of that?
We have a motion by Board Member Begley. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Board Member Williams seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is five B, two thousand, two thousand and twenty-two dash four dash RZ dash E T M J R property.
Good evening, board, council member Archer, members of the public. My name is Aaron Pritchard. I am a planner two with the town. I'm here to present a rezone for two parcels, which are located at the corner of seventy Business and the entrance ramp to US seventy west. Very, on the, the very southern edge of town, as you can see here, it's outlined on the aerial map. Currently, the site is vacant. It is approximately three point seven acres total, currently zoned, well, as you'll see on the next slide, actually. Currently, it's split zone, so there's two parcels here. The front portion of each of those two parcels along seventy Business is zoned B three, and the rear portion of those two parcels is RE. That's a relic zoning. The purpose of this rezoning petition is to get both parcels to be completely zoned B three, so that there's no split zoning on either one of those. As you can see on the bottom, the two stars are where I place the notice signs in accordance with the UDC requirements. This is just some photos from that. This is taken from our comprehensive growth plan, and it's also included in the staff report. I believe that these two goals are met, and that the proposed rezoning is consistent, so preserving Clayton's character while allowing for growth and development in appropriate areas, as well as increasing opportunities for companies that provide well-paid jobs. This is located adjacent to, or very close to Griffles. In the southern portion of town, the future land use map designation on both of these parcels is employment center, so this would be, if it were zoned B three, it would align with what the, the comprehensive plan calls for currently. And as I mentioned, employment center. So, in conclusion, staff recommends approving the proposed rezoning request, and similar to what I mentioned on the last rezoning item, if you wish, you may just cite the statements here, which I included from the comprehensive growth plan for your consistency statement. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Next, we're here from the applicant.
Mr. Gilbert?
Yes, sir.
Good to meet you.
We're just changing, getting rid of the, what I call it, relic zoning. It's the front five hundred foot that's left over from the county when it was, general business used to be on the front of seventy, and then when it got into towns, Clayton's rezoning, it was changed to B three. So, that's all we're doing, is the remaining remnant of the property, just getting it rezoned.
Thank you. Any questions of the applicant? Thank you. Thank you, sir. Are there any public comments on this matter? If not, I'll turn, turn it over to the board for their consideration. Are there any comments from the board? Thank you. If not, I'll entertain a motion to either recommend or not recommend two thousand and twenty-two dash four dash RZ E T M J R property rezoning to the town council.
I motion to recommend two thousand and twenty-two for RZ E T M J R property to the town council, in consistency with the town growth plan.
Thank you. Motion to approve by Board Member Bennett. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Board Member Lee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this moment, we need to take a five-minute recess to allow staff to prepare for the rest of the meeting. Thank you. We'll bring the February two thousand and twenty-two Town of Clayton Planning Board Meeting back to order. The next item on the agenda is five C, two thousand and twenty-one dash ninety dash CZM, Ramblewood Village. We are now here for staff.
Good evening, Planning Board members. Just as a quick reminder, these next two items are conditional zoning districts. They are new to the town. These are the first two the town's ever done, so it's, you know, as you saw before the meeting, late last week, I sent you some additional information to read up and get yourself familiar with these, so these are very similar to planned, to what are formerly were planned development districts that we had in town. However, this is a completely legislative process, so it's a little bit different process than we used to have, but, so I'll get started here. So, Ramblewood Village is requesting a rezoning of properties from residential estate and highway business zoning districts to conditional zoning residential, that would allow up to one hundred and seventy-one units, both townhomes and single-family homes, as, at a density of approximately eight units an acre, and that density would be capped at eight units per acre. It's approximately twenty-two acre pieces of, of land in size, and it's located off of US seventy Business, near the intersection with Ramblewood Drive, as you can see there on the map. This is the proposed overall site plan. As you can see in the lower right, you have the entrance off of Highway seventy, with the single-family homes and townhomes there, and then go into the rest of the property in the middle of the screen. And then off to your left is the Ramblewood Drive. So, as I mentioned, the proposed uses are just residential, a mix of single-family homes and townhomes. The access, it'll have a right-in, right-out access on US Highway seventy Business, and then it'll also have a full access onto Ramblewood Drive, which that, and which Ramblewood also has a full access onto Highway seventy Business. Water and sewers provided by the Town of Clayton, and electrics provided by Duke Energy, and annexation of the property will be required following this rezoning. And you can see the existing zoning map there, with some of the highway business and residential state that is surrounding the property. So, the proposed unit mix in the application is ninety-five single-family homes and seventy-six townhomes. That unit mix is subject to change, however, they will be limited to one hundred and seventy-one totaling units. You'll see the dimensional standards they've provided there on the, on your screen, approximately over twenty-five hundred square foot minimum lot size for single-family detached homes, and one thousand two hundred and seventy-five square foot lot sizes for the townhomes. Transportation improvements, they will be constructing a right-turn lane on US seventy at the new road access, as well as a right-turn lane on US seventy at Ramblewood Drive. They will also be constructing a right-turn lane on Ramblewood Drive itself at US seventy, and will be resurfacing Ramblewood Drive from US seventy back to their access. The project will comply with Town of Clayton stormwater ordinance. There is public water available on US seventy Ramblewood Drive, and there is public sewer available on US seventy, but it is a ways away from the site, so the development will provide an extension of gravity sewer main to connect into the town sewer, and they will be studying whether to, whether additional improvements will be needed to pump stations in the area, and again, that is one of the conditions of the development. And then, of course, electric services available from Duke Energy. The development will consist of approximately seven point seven five acres of open space and amenities. Open space includes protected wetlands and a pond, and then the neighborhood amenities will include an off-leash dog park, community pool and clubhouse, and a mulch walking trail around the pond. The development is proposing fifteen-foot-wide type-C landscaping buffer along the entire perimeter of the development, and they will, they have also offered to construct a six-foot-tall privacy fence as the opaque, opaque screening that is required for that buffer, and they will also install twelve additional shrubs per one hundred linear feet of that buffer. They will also be planting the required thoroughfare street yard buffer on US seventy frontage, and installing street trees, meeting the unified development code requirements throughout the development. And you'll see also on this slide is the list of ten architectural standards that they have proposed, and one of the recommended conditions is that the development ultimately comply with these ten architectural standards. As far as the conditional zoning district criteria, the first criteria consists with adopted plans and policies of the town. The two thousand and forty growth plan calls for this area to be agricultural rural residential, which is limited to two units an acre. The two thousand and forty-five growth plan did upgrade this area to call for it to be medium-density residential, still limiting it to three to five units per acre. So, while the application and the development is not consistent with the growth plan, the applicant has proposed conditions to mitigate the impact of the development. Suitability of the subject property, the current zoning permits a mix of commercial and very low-density residential uses. The proposed conditional district will only permit residential uses, and the applicant is proposing to connect to public water and extend public sewer to serve the development. The further criteria, improves the balance of uses, meets specific demand in town. As mentioned, the area is currently a mix of low-density to very low-density residential development, commercial and agricultural uses, but the proposed development would provide a mix of housing with easy access to Clayton and Wake County, being directly located on Highway seventy. The development will be served by, by Cooper Elementary, Riverwood Middle, and Clayton High School, and all three schools are currently on the two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and twenty-two cap school list for Johnston County. The roads, development will be accessed by US seventy Business and Ramblewood Drive, with a right-in, right-out access on seventy Business, and full access on Ramblewood Drive, in addition to their interior, internal road network. The application mentions that there, that Clayton Community Park, Clayton Community Center Municipal Park, and Legend Park are nearby, and for wastewater treatment, as we mentioned, they will be served by an extension of gravity sewer main along US seventy, connecting into existing town sewer infrastructure, and the development is subject to the town wastewater allocation policy, and has... And the development is subject to the town wastewater allocation policy and has indicated that they can, they've provided indications that they can score enough points to be allocated wastewater by the town council. Public water is available on US 70 Ramblewood Drive, and they will follow the town stormwater ordinance. The, all town ordinances, procedures, and approvals will be followed, so the legal purposes of zoning are not contravened. Regarding no adverse impact on adjoining property enters, the development will install a 15-foot landscape buffer with an opaque privacy fence at six feet tall. They will also be preserving existing wetlands adjacent to the research farm, and they have agreed to a condition requiring disclosure on future plats, deeds, and incovenants about potential noxious smells, noises, and dust from farming operations on the research farm. And with the imposed conditions, staff does not believe there will be any detriment to the general public. Listed on your screen here is the master plan approval criteria, and staff does believe that the applicant has met the criteria through the master plan, master plan narrative, and the proposed conditions on the project. Finally, some considerations for the planning board. Planning board shall make a recommendation to the town council. The recommendation shall include a written statement to the town council describing whether the recommendation, whether the proposal is consistent with the adopted plans and policies of the town. If the planning board fails to make a recommendation to town council, town council may process a request without a recommendation. The conditional zoning district master plan and narrative will all be recorded with Johnston County if the project, if this is approved, and those will run with the land and do not expire. If the conditional zoning district is approved, the 2045 growth plan, future land use map will be considered amended to match the proposed conditional zoning district, and this area will be shown on that map as high-density residential to match the proposed zoning, conditional zoning district. The planning board, as always, may recommend conditions to be revised, added, or removed. However, the applicant does have to agree to any changes in the conditions. As far as the conditions, I'll try to go through these as quickly as possible. There are 15 of them. The first three are relatively standard conditions, as you'll see on most anything that we do, just requiring them to submit electronic copyback for us to stamp approval of, that they'll meet UDC and other requirements and ordinances of the town, that the development will be constructed in substantial conformance with the master plan. We also have the condition four is all parcels will be, subject to the rezoning, a master plan will be annexed in the town prior to any additional development approvals. Uses in the development will be limited to single-family detached residential homes and townhomes, and any allowed accessory uses within the Town of Clayton Unified Development Code for residential development. We have condition six, which will limit the development to 171 total units at eight dwelling unit, limit density to eight dwelling units per acre. The minimum lot size for single-family homes will be 2,500 square feet. Minimum lot size for townhomes will be 1,275 square feet, and the minimum lot width, front, side, side street, and rear setbacks are as specified in the master plan. The, we are, we have added a condition that the transportation improvements, that they were, that their transportation impact analysis showed that they should construct, will be constructed. That includes the asphalt overlay on Ramblewood Drive from Highway 70 to the proposed intersection with their new internal road, as well as a 100-foot-long right turn lane on Ramblewood Drive at 70, and then 100, and then two 100-foot-long right turn lanes on Highway 70, one at the new access road and one at Ramblewood Drive. The development will also be required to, to pay the town's recreation open space fee per single-family lot if they do not meet the, if they meet the requirements in the code at time of development. The development will also provide three amenity areas, a swimming pool with restroom facilities and clubhouse, a mulched walking trail around the existing pond located on site, and a fenced dog park. And then condition 10, we have, we're requiring that all Type C landscape buffers will include the additional 12 evergreen shrubs per 100 linear feet, and will also include the opaque wood privacy fence on, in all buffers. Condition 11 is related to the sewer extension, and again, the applicant has, actually, the applicant and town worked on this condition together, but essentially the applicant will be studying the sewer infrastructure and making any necessary improvements, upgrades, or if there's a town project that comes along in that time, they will contribute their fair share of funding to make any necessary upgrades to the sewer in order to adequately serve their development. Each unit will contain all sustainable high-efficiency appliances and will be certified through EcoSelect program, and the certification will be conducted by an independent third party and shall be submitted to the planning department prior to certificate of occupancy for each home. And this, this condition specifically goes back to a, to one of the wastewater allocation scoring criteria that requires sustainable high-efficiency appliances and methods be used in order to gain points for wastewater allocation. There will also be an informational statement provided on all plats and deeds and incovenants regarding the farming operations surrounding the development and potential noxious sounds, smells, and dust. All single-family homes and townhomes must comply with architectural standards and building elevations provide the master plan narrative, and that does include 25% masonry materials, which again, they received points for in the wastewater allocation scoring criteria. And then finally, to the extent of any conflict between the master plan, master plan narrative and these conditions, these conditions shall control. And with that, staff is recommending approval of the Ramblewood Village Conditional Zoning District master plan, subject to the 15 recommended conditions of approval. And you'll notice my consistency statement is considerably simpler than those you've seen before, but essentially, you do have to provide a consistency statement to the council of whether this proposed development is consistent with the growth plan or not. As I mentioned, four, it is not consistent, so if this development is approved, the 2045 growth plan, future land use map will be amended to match this approval. That I'm available for any questions. The applicant is here to provide a presentation, and I do believe there may be members of the public as well that would like to speak.
Thank you. Any questions of staff?
I have a question. You said it's going to be annexed into the, into the city limits. Is that a satellite annexation, or is it contiguous now to the city limit?
I'd have to look at that. It may be satellite right now. It is within our ETJ, but it, it may be considered a satellite annexation. I'd have to, I did not look into that.
Board member Powers?
Yes, sir. I don't know if this, these few points would be for you or for the applicant, but I'll start with you since you're here. I looked, I did not see, and I didn't hear, there, in the plan, there is no left-turn access off Business 70 to get into the development for eastbound traffic?
The left, the left-turn access would be at Ramblewood Drive. So, the Ramblewood Drive is currently full access. There's a left turn on Highway, on eastbound Highway 70 to turn onto Ramblewood Drive, but there will be no left-turn access onto the new internal public street that the development will be constructing.
Okay, so how I'm seeing it in my mind, if you turn left onto Randallman, you have to go down Ramblewood. You have to go down Ramblewood till you get to the new Little Teeny Road, and then go in that way?
Correct.
Okay, okay. Second point, on the rear of the property, it's, it butts the railroad. I looked again, and I didn't see, is there any thought to put some kind of a sound buffer up there to shield the residents?
The 15-foot landscape buffer will be, there will be a 15-foot landscape buffer along that northern property line, as well as a six-foot-tall privacy fence.
Okay.
That is on all three of the property lines, or all the property lines with the exception of the road frontage.
Okay. The last mention that I've got applies to the next, the next item on the agenda also. There's a thing, none of the schools listed are in the 21-22 cap school list. All six of those schools are surrounded by trailers currently. If that doesn't cap a school, what, what is the criteria for capping a school?
So, the applicant had stated that it, that the schools are not capped. However, when I, I did pull up the 2021-22 cap school list, and for this development, all three schools are on the cap school list. However, I will remind the planning board, in North Carolina, we cannot, it is very difficult for municipalities to take that into account, because we are not allowed to have adequate public facilities ordinances. So, it is information. The schools, however, are run by the county, and so there is, there is limited ability for the town to take that into consideration when approving developments. But it is a piece of information that you do have.
Yeah, I just had the thought that there's, I believe it was 170 units here, or 170 units at the other subdivision, and roughly the same here. That's, that's going to be 600 kids going somewhere, and they don't have classrooms. But if we can't concern ourselves with that, then, you know, we won't.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Any other members of staff comments? One member vaguely.
Thank you, board member. I just wanted to also agree with that. That was the one thing that was kind of giving me pause overall was the, the schools. I didn't realize that we were not able to weigh in on that.
Well, I mean, you can, it's, it's certainly a consideration you can have, but it's not, it cannot be a basis for a decision.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I've got one other question.
One member to free.
In the TIA, if the people, majority of the people coming home in the evening, obviously, probably, are going to be coming from the Raleigh side. Turning left on the Ramblewood, there's a little, there's a little median opening there now. There's three or four houses on Ramblewood that's there. Do you remember the number of cars a day that are gonna, I think when people leave, they'll go out the new road. When they come back, they're gonna go right by the front of these houses.
Yeah, I do not recall the, the exact number of cars the applicant is here. They may be able to speak to that information. However, I will say, generally speaking, single-family homes and townhomes do not, compared to some other uses, they do not generate as much vehicular traffic as other uses do. The other thing to remember, especially with transportation impact analyses, is that they are, it is a rather blunt instrument. It is based on a lot of assumptions, and so it, while it is certainly good data and it provides good data points, you do have to remember that TIA's are not, they're, they're based on a lot of assumptions, and it, things could change, but they do provide a good data point.
Any other members of the board comments?
Mr. Howell, I have a couple of questions. Could you go back to the site plan? I noticed that you said the minimum lot size will be 2,500 square feet. Do you have a range from the site plan, or do you know the, the range of the lot sizes for this?
I do not know that. The applicant may be able to speak to that. So, for, for us, and for the application, and for the condition, that's, that would be the minimum lot size would be 2,500 square feet for the single-family homes.
Okay. Second question, looking at the site plan, I noticed that they said they would provide two vehicle parking spaces on each lot, either with a one-car garage and parking pad, or a two-car garage. Looking at the site plan, and I'm looking at the garage, and I'm looking at the space between the road and the garage on the site plan, and you really can't see it on this one, you can see it on the larger one. Do you know the setback from the road to the actual residential unit and the length?
It'll, it'll have to meet the, the minimum rear setback for the property, which I believe they have proposed at seven feet for the rear, and since he's all parked in the rear. However, I will say they also have to meet the town's parking standards, and so our standard is a parking space is 19 feet long. So, if they're, so you will need, they will need at least 19 feet for cars parked in that driveway, between the end of the driveway and the structure.
It's, I mean, it's good that you said that, because I've noticed some, it's, some other subdivisions, if the town is requiring 19 feet, nobody's measuring. And the reason I'm bringing that up, because I did look at, and the reason, I believe you said 19 feet, the Irish large pickup truck is around 18 feet, four inches.
Yeah.
So, I take that into account. I know it's come to the planning board before, and some of the approvals from the town, people with pickup trucks parking in the driveway approved by the town have encroached upon the right-of-way on the sidewalk. So, it's, it's amazing that you said that, but we haven't regularly seen that, because that issue's come up to this planning board during my three-year tenure.
Yeah, and that's certainly, I think that's something that town staff is aware of, and we are, you know, we have, we have added a lot of staff, both in planning and in the engineering department, to try and make sure that we do not have those issues with the new development, that it is, you know, when, at plan review, the new development, you know, has to prove to us that they have enough, that they have a minimum 19 feet of length in a driveway for, to park a car between the house and the right-of-way. So, I mean, we do, like I said, a plan review, we do check that. That may not, in the past, that may not have always been checked in the field, or the developments may not have been held to that standard, but that is our standard, and we do, we are working to ensure that all new development is built to that standard.
Right. Now, I don't know that the site plan is to scale, but if you look at the site plan larger, it doesn't exist on the site plan 19 feet.
Well, and, and one thing to note, this is a master plan, so following, if they, if this is approved, they will be coming in, they'll, the developer will then have to come in with a preliminary plat, a preliminary subdivision plat, where all that information will be much clearer, and it'll be at a proper scale. So, again, this is just a master plan that gives you an idea of what the layout will look like and approximate size and locations of the lots, but they still have number of approvals. If this is approved, they still have a couple of approvals before they can actually start building.
The reason I was bringing up about parking from this site plan, I only counted, if you exclude the driveways, I only counted 36 extra parking spaces in the whole subdivision for visitors, people with more than two cars. And the reason I'm bringing it up, we've seen a couple of subdivision, but this issue's come up, has come up before after we've approved them. So, looking at the size of the lots, minimum with 2,500 square feet, looking at a parking pad, if, as you know, if, with a single-car garage and one parking pad, if you have two cars, you're parking on the street.
Yeah, yeah, and they-
The reality is, families operate, move, nobody's gonna back up every time a spouse comes in. So, if you don't, if you don't put a two, two-car parking pad and a one-car, and it's just a one-car parking pad, that second car is parked on the street, and we've seen that in subdivision after subdivision in Clayton.
Yeah, I understand, and I've, certainly have seen it in other places I've worked. I will note that, and the applicant can speak to this a little bit more in depth, but they are proposing on-street parking both along, both sides of their, of the private main street.
Yes, I counted all of them. It's about 36.
Okay, okay, so you did, you counted the, there's part, on-street parking here, as well as on-street parking here.
Three little small lots, yes.
And then there's the couple of pockets.
Right.
Okay, all right. But like I said, the applicant can also speak more to that. They're, they're gonna be more, more familiar with their target audience and, and who may be purchasing these homes.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments for staff? Here in none, we're turning it over to the applicant.
Vance. Oh, okay. I want us to come back.
Yeah.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the-
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board, Councilwoman Archer. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. My name is Marty Bizzle, with Bass, Nixon, Kennedy Engineers, 6310 Chapel Hill Road in Raleigh. I am the project engineer on the Ramblewood Village. Pleasure to be here, a little bit different stepping on this side of the table. I see a lot of old faces and a lot of new faces, but a pleasure to be here anyway, to present this project. This is Ramblewood Village. As Ben has stated, it is a CZ conditional zoning request. A little guy a little nervous when he said that this is one of the first ones to come through, but the staff has been great to work with. It's been a long road to actually get here, with it being new, and we've been through several staff members, but I feel like staff has been great and gracious in giving us the time and input that we needed to try to navigate through this process. So, I'll get right to it. Our project team is here tonight, myself, Gary Wallston, with my office, Bass, Nixon, Kennedy. So, planner, landscape architect, Brad Whitehurst is the owner representative here tonight. And we have our traffic engineer, who did our traffic study, Nate Boaklin, he is also here tonight. I wanted to basically go through a presentation that we had prepared, but I don't want to repeat a lot of things that Ben may have mentioned already, and Ben did a thorough job as well, and basically covered all of this, some of the highlights that we are a CZ zoning proposal, 171 total units proposed that are maximal density. And we're, our current plan is proposed as 95 detached homes, 76 townhomes, and our open space area exceeds a minimal requirement with 7.75 acres. Public water and sewers be provided by the town. Ben went through that pretty well, as far as how we propose to obtain that. It will entail a sewer extension, and some water meter relocations for the town, as we're tapping into a county line, but staff has worked very well with us on how that will be accomplished. Obviously, the location is on the western side of the town, just inside the Johnston County limits, a little bit drilled-in version of our site. We're immediately adjacent to the, or just west of the North Carolina State Research Facility to our east. This is a colored rendering of our site, basically no difference in what Ben had proposed before, just a little easier to see. The darker orange is our proposed townhomes, and then our more yellow colors there are our single-family products. It's important to understand, and I think we will get back to some of those questions, as far as the access is through the rear, they are rear-loaded products. This is not unique to Clayton. It is a unique product, but not unique to Clayton. Many of you may be familiar with East Village Walk. It's a project we proposed several years ago, and it's actually on the ground now, and it's actually worked very well, where these units actually face, instead of a street or public street, they face a courtyard that's connected in series, very efficiently, with sidewalk system, that ultimately makes it a very walkable community out to the public streets and private streets as well. Ben did a great job talking about our landscaping. The highlight is our 15-foot perimeter buffer supplemented with a six-foot opaque fence. So, we have actually talked with that in our neighborhood meetings with NC State. They seemed pleased with that, but that is something that we did add as well around the perimeter of the property. Here's a little bit of a blow-up of what that would look like, still 15 feet in width, with our canopy trees, shrubbery, as well as that six-foot tall fence. So, just wanted to kind of highlight that. Ben has already talked also about three, we consider high-quality amenity areas that I'm very, very proud of, that present as a dog park, pretty substantially, substantial in size, 7,500, 8,500 square feet of dog park. Our community pool and clubhouse would be out towards US 70 with a community building that would house all the mailboxes associated with the project as well. And our walking trail would extend around the existing pond that's on our property that we propose to remain as well. So, the owner was key and wanted to keep that as an amenity. Talking a little bit about our layout, this is also in the narrative, which was in your packets. This gives a little bit better idea of a typical block of how that may work. Obviously, you know, questions have been raised with the minimum setback, and those kinds of things, as far as if a car was parked outside. Obviously, these work best if every vehicle is inside the garage, and those that only have a one-car garage would have a parking pad, as you see to the top left. Our apartment, our townhome buildings are also the same. They are equipped with one and two-car garages as well. I think our total guest parking, including our guest parking lots, as well as on-street parking, is about 59 spaces as well on top of this. But as Dan said, or as Ben said, this is basically what we have proposed at this point. It can, it can be tweaked with our preliminary site plans as they move through the process, this being a general concept of what we're proposing here. But ideally, this is, this is how this would work, with a rear-loaded garage and parking pads for each one of the units. This is a little bit of a rendering of what the courtyard would actually look like, where all the bases, this is our single-family portion, facing inward to a sidewalk system that is ultimately connected out to the, to the private streets. Again, this is very familiar, or very similar to what you might see out at East Village Walk today. A little bit of a more side view, you can see the alley in the rear, this is a side-shot view, where the, the actual front is actually facing a courtyard, and the access being from the rear. Street view, look at what the townhome buildings would look like. As you can see, those actually are facing a more of the public street in that section, also fed by alleys in the rear. One thing I think is very cool is that we have the garage units in the rear, but also have the decks for use, an elevated situation there, which is, I said, cool, but I thought it was really, really neat that the architect has worked this in. So, very, kind of a unique product there. One thing that came out of the TIA that was performed by our traffic engineer are those two right turn lanes off of US 70, which, based on those, those were recommendations that came out of the traffic impact analysis. So, this is the first one, as you're leaving Clayton, headed west on US 70 into our site there, 100-foot storage and a 200-foot taper on US 70. And then Ramblewood Drive, existing now, is not in the best of condition. We would be constructing a right-turn lane on US 70 onto Ramblewood Drive, up to our first entrance there. In addition, the owner or the client has proposed to overlay from that portion in gray there, all the way from US 70 up to the access point there, a 20-foot overlay of asphalt to try to improve the condition of Ramblewood Drive, as well as construct a new right-turn lane onto US 70 West as well. But that, those are, that, those basically have come out of recommendations from our traffic study. With that, I just wanted to re-add a couple of things. We are in agreement with all the conditions as presented. We have actually signed those conditions presented by Ben, and fully adhere to take care of those. One thing on our site plan that I wanted to mention, that has been a concern that came out of our neighborhood meetings, the light-blue areas are our stormwater control measures. We propose two of those to provide water quality, as far as water quality standards, and also meet peak attenuation requirements as required by the town of Clayton. We have been in discussions with NC State as far as the research pond goes, or the research farm. Immediately to our east, there is an existing pond that they are quite concerned about as far as the water quality. The owner has told me that we will meet and exceed all of our standards as far as providing erosion control and water quality, to make sure that our pond is protected. So, we will, we will go above and beyond the minimums there. We are also bordered on that between us and the research farm by a wetland area that has been delineated and approved by the Army Corps of Engineers. So, we will be bound to protect that wellon as well. So, just wanted to throw that out. We normally don't talk about erosion control at this level, but I do want to let you know that we are committed to making sure that that pond stays in the condition it is now. I am here with my planners, and owner rep, and our traffic engineer. If you have specific questions, we will do our best to address those. Again, I thank you for your, for your attention tonight.
Thank you. Any questions of the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any public comments on this matter? Yes, sir. Please give us your name and your address.
My name is Leslie Hunt. I live at 629 Ramblewood Drive at Clayton, in the, I'm at the end of the street of Ramblewood Drive. We have about, close to four acres there. We've lived there for, since 1968. We're in the, as you know, in the ETJ, which means we don't even get to vote for you guys when it comes up to our election time. It appears that what they're talking about is annexing this section into Clayton if it is approved. I'm almost positive that it's not contiguous with any of the current town properties, because the state research farm owns a big chunk of land, unless you're going to annex the state research farm into this. My concern is primarily with the density of this property. By the time you take out the area that they're keeping for the wetlands, for the park, for the swimming pool, for the other stuff, we're talking about less than 15 acres that you're putting 171 houses on. Now, according to Mr. Howell in his presentation, even the 2040 guidelines for expansion talk about three to four units per acre. We're already double that for your projections for 2040. The property, also, one of the things, I don't know if anybody's really noticed it that much, but the back part, the most northern part of this place, there's a major railroad line through there. Our residence is approximately 2 to 250 feet off of the current railroad's right-of-way. When some of these big freight trains come through, it shakes stuff off the shelves in the house, because they're loaded down heavy, and the vibration just rolls right through the ground. It's like living next to an airport, as far as the vibration. Which is gonna knock out probably, from what I can see, probably about 20 or 30 houses that are gonna be constantly complaining about the railroad. Now, unless we're gonna be rerouting the railroad, which has been there since 1860, I believe, and that's gonna be a major undertaking, and I'm not sure how the Department of Transportation is gonna like that if you talk about moving the railroad track. So, I'm concerned primarily about the density of the property. As, I've lived at this property for over 40 years. I've lived, I've been a resident of Clayton for 60 years. People ask me if I lived in Clayton all my life, and I tell them, well, not yet. But anyway, so, and we've lived here, this is very low-density area, primarily, I mean, there's only three or four houses along Ramblewood Drive on one side, a couple of houses on the other side. It's been that way for, well, for, since, actually since the place was built, that which the land was divided out in 1961. And we've already had one neighbor, a close friend of ours, that was on this property about two years ago, when there was a rumor that they were gonna be building apartment buildings on this property, and they moved. So, it's already affected the neighborhood, even though they haven't turned the first shovel of dirt on the property. I'm also concerned, because if, if you're talking about, I know they're talking about putting a six-foot fence up next to the railroad track, but if there are any children in there, children are gonna be on the railroad track. It's gonna present a danger, I believe, to, for public safety, in addition to the fact that all those houses that are near the railroad track, they're not gonna be happy with their property for very long. I, I'm not against the development, per se, I'm just against the density that they're talking about doing it, especially since it appears to violate the town's current guidelines for the 2040 projections by double already. And it means, I mean, what is the limit? Are we gonna be like Tokyo, where we got 15 houses per acre here pretty soon? Or we got people stacked up on top of each other? This is a, not only a safety issue, but a quality of life issue as well. When you talk about adding five or 600 people onto a 15-acre plot of land, and you're fencing them in, basically, you're, you know, it's gonna be like a, I guess, like a small prison camp or something. You got, you're fenced into the neighborhood, the streets look like they're gonna be pretty narrow, which is gonna create a problem if they do have a fire safety issue, fire trucks, all it's gonna take is one vehicle on the street, and fire trucks and emergency vehicles won't be able to get down this road, because they're, they're planning for maximum density and maximum capacity. And that's, I don't think that's in the best interest of the people who live there, or in the best interest of the, of the town. I would, I would submit that the best thing is to probably cut this, I'm not saying, I'm not sure what, what the number would be, but 500 people on 15 acres of land is, is pretty dense, unless you're talking about a high-rise apartment building. I don't want to see Clayton turned into a mini New York City, or someplace where people are living on top of each other, basically. And when you're talking about a lot that's 2,500 square foot, and you have to have a certain amount of easement around each of the houses, you got to have a place for parking, what kind of house are we talking about? 1,800, 1,000 square feet? It looks like, from some of the diagrams on here, you'll be able to literally crawl from your bedroom window into your neighbor's bedroom window without ever getting your feet wet on the grass. And, and that just seems to be just a little bit too, too much of a density problem. And I guess that's all I got to say about that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. I really appreciate it. Yes, ma'am. Please give us your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Jessie Askew, and I'm afraid my address is in Raleigh, North Carolina, but I, 3317 Roundtree Court, for the record. I am the Director of Real Estate Services for NC State University. I'm sure you're all aware that this property is largely surrounded to the east, south, and west by the Central Crops Research Station, which is allocated to the university for use, and is operated in conjunction with the North Carolina Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services. Marty took the wind out of my sails a little bit when he mentioned, we are here, we want to go on record, we're not opposed to the development, but we do have concerns about potential contamination to the pond. We have an irrigation pond directly east of the development that serves about half of our 523-acre facility. So, we want to just ask the planning board and the town staff, as this project moves through permitting phase, to be mindful of contamination, not just of the development... through permitting phase, to be mindful of contamination, not just of the development once it's completed, but in particular, construction development. Any sediment or contamination that gets into that pond could potentially cost the university millions of dollars. And so, you know, we will be working with the developer. They've been very communicative with us thus far to make sure as they get through DSW permitting that we do some continued testing. We want to make sure that the research station is protected. That's all.
Thank you. Any questions? Any other public comments? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Betty Hunt. Ray just spoke. That's my husband, and I agree with everything that he said. I just have one thing to add to that, and that's where they kept addressing the right turn, the right turn out of Ramblewood. They would have all that covered. But a lot of us go to Clayton. We want to make a left turn. And trying to cross over, sometimes you sit there quite a while for the people coming out of Clayton, you sit in the median quite a while waiting for them to come from Raleigh. And so, if you've got a lot of people living there and everybody's trying to turn left, you're going to have to do something at that intersection to make it more safe. I don't know what, but I just know a lot of folks go, I go to Clayton more than I go to Raleigh. So, I want to be able to get out there safely on the highway. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Any other member of the public would like to speak? Thank you. I'll turn it over to the board for their consideration. Are there any comments from the board?
I would like to make a comment.
Yes, sir. Board Member Bennett?
So, what I would say about this development is just that I have been in neighborhoods like this where they've been built in other places, and I would say that in the long run, it's probably better to have an area that's a little more dense like this to preserve other places having open space. I do 100% agree with the concerns that maybe this is a little too much all at once in one place. But I have learned that it's better to have density in one place to preserve open space, common open space, sometimes rather than have everybody spread out, you know, and taking up open space. Not just that, but also that these kinds of neighborhoods are generally nice places to live. You know, I have friends that live in neighborhoods and developments like this in other places, and they're just, they're really nice places, they're quality places generally speaking. And if the developer does it right, which I, you know, would hope that they would, then I would say that it's just generally a good place to live in, you know, in the long run.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board members?
I'd like to make a statement. I was just looking at the minimum lot size of 2,500 square feet and the density. The average, the median lot size of a home in the South Region United States is about 8,177 square feet. Of course, we all know that an acre is 43,560 square feet, and a quarter-acre house, which is not a very, very large lot, would be 10,890 square feet. One seventeenth of an acre, one seventeenth would be 2,562 square feet. So, the minimum lot size proposed for this plan would be less than a seventeenth of an acre for a single-family home. The density, of course, bothers me, and I wanted to put that out. And also, on the site plan, I would give the applicant for the single, for the one-car garage, single-family homes and townhouses where they did have a separate parking pad that was not directly narrow with the driveway, I thought that was applaudable. But on the two-car garages, as you can see, I think the staff would have some work on the setback plans if this was approved, according to Ben's with the 19 feet as stated. So, I was just speaking for informational purposes. I would turn it over to the Board Member Powers.
Just a point that it has come up before this board several times in the last couple of years that most of the residential construction has been what we refer to as townhomes or starter homes. And this was also, this also came up at at least one council meeting that it was expressed that that should not be the only construction that Clayton has that we need, as Mr. Moore was saying, bigger acreage for the houses, bigger houses, places like that. We still continue, now, I don't have anything against this development and the next development that we're going to talk about. But we've mentioned it several times, the council has mentioned it, that all of the stuff that we're approving keeps getting higher density, higher density, and higher density, and we don't have any areas coming in that are lower density. I just wanted to mention that. And now, if you had something else, Mr.?
Thank you. Any other comments from the board?
I have one.
Your Board Member Dupree?
I agree with you that I see the stuff that's being built in Clayton, and I get it. You got land, you want to get the most for your land that you can, and I fully understand that. But I am concerned that Clayton is filling up with starter homes, and I don't want Clayton, I mean, you got to start somewhere, but I don't want Clayton to be full of starters and some finishers. I want some people that are going to stay here a while and not people that just move to town until they can afford to buy something nice or out of town. I'm also a little concerned that we're conditionally rezoning the plan that just got put in place for 2040, 2045. It's not much of a plan if we change it almost immediately, and it sets a precedent for how, you know, every other change that comes along. I'm not against this particular project. I am a little concerned with changing the plan. There's not much use in having a plan if you start changing it immediately.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board? If not, I'll entertain a motion to either recommend or not recommend 2024, I mean,
If I can just clarify, it's, this is 2021-90-CZM.
You're right. I'm sorry.
And again, just, you know, to remind the planning board, you do have options here. I mean, you can approve the development with the conditions proposed, you can approve the development with revised conditions, added conditions, removed conditions. You can, and all these are recommendations. You can recommend denial of the development. You're also, you know, you also have the ability to table the, table this consideration if you feel that there's additional information that can be provided that would, you know, make it easier for you to make a recommendation at the next meeting. So, I just did want to remind the planning board that you do have some options here for how you want to proceed.
Thank you, Mrs. Howell. And for the record, I'll entertain a motion to either recommend or not recommend 5C 2021-90-CZM Ramblewood Village.
Would it be possible for me to ask staff a question very quickly?
Yes, sir.
Would it be possible to add a condition to this where you keep kind of the same basic layout but reduce the total number of units?
You certainly can ask to do that. We would need to pull the, have the applicant come back up here and see if they are agreeable to that additional condition.
All righty.
To that a little bit, we kind of, I spoke earlier that we came in early, and it's taken several months to get to this point. We actually came in under the 2040 growth plan. The 2045 was adopted after we had submitted and were going through the process. One thing that we had noted is a change from the 2040 plan to the 2045 plan in the definition of medium density. It capped it at 20, in the 2040 plan, up to seven units per acre, and I think we are now at 7.9. That was our premise for moving forward with the plan you see today. The 2045 plan was then approved, and the definition of medium density went down. Correct me if I'm, I think we've talked a little bit about it. But we chose to go forward based on the idea that we were technically medium density under the 2040 plan. If the board chose, we would be willing to drop that back tonight to cap it at seven, at seven units per acre. I can make that concession now if that helps, which would bring us in line with the old definition of medium density. So...
What I'm concerned about is not necessarily the kind of density of, you know, each house being next to one another. Like I said, I've been in neighborhoods like this. I actually think the houses in their proximity to one another is fine. My concern was more that the total number of units may just be too much for an area like this at this time. You know, maybe 20 years down the line, if there's, you know, way too many people in Clayton, there's nowhere else to go, you know, that kind of deal. I think at this moment, maybe just the total number of units is a bit too many.
Right. And understood, if we were to cap our density at seven, we would, you know, basically drop a unit per acre. So, 22 units we would drop just by dropping our density, our maximum density. So, just another way of stating that. We're prepared this evening to agree to that.
Board Member Bennett?
Thank you. Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm just rolling this over in my head. Mr. Bizzle or staff, my question is to Mr. Dupree's point, the 2045, we upped it to medium-density residential. And just correct me if I don't have this understanding correct, but at a gross density of three to five acres and units per acre, now we're saying we're going to bring it up to seven.
What Mr. Bizzle was saying was that in 2040, in the 2040 growth plan, the medium-density residential category allowed for a density up to seven units per acre. In the 2045 growth plan, the medium-density residential category is now defined as three to five units per acre. And so, that's where he was saying, I think, you know, even though, even under the 2040 growth plan, they were still proposing something more dense than was identified for the area in the 2040 plan. They met the general, they were meeting the general density proposed by medium-density residential in the 2040 plan. Now, in the 2045 plan, the density they're proposing, they would be considered high-density residential.
So, back to Board Member Dupree's point, I, you know, I guess what I want to ask is, is it possible to not amend the 2045 growth plan? We worked hard to get there as a town. Is it possible to bring it to five rather than seven?
And that would be, again, the applicant would have to address that. As far as amending the plan, the reason that language is in there is by state law now, approval of a rezoning to a more dense zoning district than is envisioned in a future land use plan means that we automatically have to, it's not prohibited, it just means we automatically have to revise the future land use plan to match that rezoning. But I'll let the applicant speak to whether five units an acre may be agreeable.
I don't think that we're prepared to drop to five at this point, but I would go back. I don't have the exact date, but several months before 2045 was approved, we had submitted and actually had anticipated being beyond where we're at now. But we understand with staff changes and things like that, and this being a new zoning district, it took longer. But I can tell you that we, when we initially came in, we were working under the 2040 definitions. And that's basically how we have proposed and planned. And I would say too, and I think it's in the staff report that Ben mentioned, this area is changing quite a bit in that we are mitigating, you know, we are mitigating with extra infrastructure or the infrastructure needed to support higher density in this area. Obviously, in the current state, it is now, these road improvements, these sewer improvements are not there. But by providing the sewer extensions, by making the extensions into the water system, providing the public street system, we are mitigating those, some of those criteria that basically would prohibit a higher-density development. And I can tell you, we formulated the whole plan based on, in the general area of seven, obviously, we're at 7.9 now, but in the seven area. And obviously, looking at a growth plan as a guide, it's obviously mentioned in the growth plan that it is not meant to be prescriptive. I actually sat in on the growth steering committee meeting, and it is a guide for development. It is not the code. So, we feel like we're still meeting the intent of that code by mitigating the additional density with the additional infrastructure that we're providing. But as far as the exact number that we came down to, we were really basing everything on the 2040 plan, not thinking that we would be in the process when the 2045 plan moved forward and really not anticipating that medium density to change that much. It's quite a significant change, not to say that it's bad, but it does, it does make us look inconsistent with the comp plan, which we don't want that. But just to understand, we did formulate this plan under the 2045 definition of medium density.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the board?
Chairman Moore, I just, I do want to clarify, while in the staff report and in the presentation, we did, I did mention 2045 and the 2045 growth plan quite a bit. As Marty mentioned, they did come in when the 2040, when the 2040 growth plan was in place, and so, that is really the growth plan that you should be considering when you're considering this. But I just wanted to make clear to the board that, you know, we have had a new growth plan adopted since then that did, and I did it in your net, you'll notice it in the next case too. I just want to make clear to the board that while both of these should be considered, really, under the 2040 growth plan, we've had a 2045 growth plan that did, in both cases, I think, up the identified density in these areas. However, in this case, not to the level that the applicant was, is proposing.
Thank you, sir. Board Member Williams?
My concern is the NC State, whenever sand pollution and the area that they've been working with for years. I grew up here in Clayton as well. The density bothers me a little bit, the railroad running through with, as he said, kids and people, you know, in this area. So, I'm just a little concerned about how many people in that small area. So, what he's saying is you can't come down past seven, right, for right now?
Yeah, that is what they're saying tonight. And I know Mr. Powers won't speak, but I will just take one more opportunity to remind the board, this is a legislative zoning decision, and you're making a recommendation tonight, not a final decision. But with it being legislative, there is, it is a little bit easier to, if you choose to recommend denial of this case, that is a little bit easier in a legislative decision versus if it was a quasi judicial or some other. So, I do want to, you know, remind you that while staff, we have written, I've written the staff report and proposed it as a... the staff report and proposed it as a recommendation for approval and provided conditions that working with the developer, you know, staff does believe that the conditions will mitigate many of their impacts. The planning board is permitted to, you know, there is nothing wrong with the planning board if that is your choice to recommend denial or recommend a different action. So I do, I do want to make that clear to the board.
Thank you, sir. Board Member Powers?
My question, sir, and it's not about this, this item or the next item specifically, but you're mentioning the thing that the 2045 plan was just accepted or approved or whatever last fall. Projects have been in, in, being worked on continually. If, if we look at this one and the next one, when, when, when do we start using the criteria for the plan that we're supposed to be working under at, at this, you know, at the time of this meeting?
Yeah, so that is based, that is based on the, the date that the project is submitted for review. So I believe these are our last two, these would be our last two new projects, quote unquote, new projects, that would fall under the 2040 plan. That's why the previous two rezonings, I think you only saw reference to the 2045 plan because they were submitted after the 2045 plan was approved. So like I said, these, and as Mr. Bizzle indicated, these projects were submitted actually well before even I got here. And through staff turnover and the planning department workload issues and, and other considerations, both this project and the next one have taken an inordinately long amount of time to get to you. I do not expect that to happen in the future, but, you know, these are two cases where they've taken longer than usual to, to get to this point.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board?
Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to either recommend or not recommend 5C 2021-90 CZM-Ramblewood Village property zoning to the town council.
I motion to approve on the condition that the density is reduced to seven units per acre.
We have a motion by Board Member Bennett. Is there a second?
I second that.
We have a motion and a second by Board Member Bagley?
Chairman Moore, if I can just take a quick moment, if the board does decide to move forward with this recommendation, I just want to note that we will, we will have to craft a new condition to that effect. And there's some, there will be some different things laid out in that, one of which mean, one of which we'll need to ensure that we'll get an updated revised master plan, and the narrative will need to be revised. So I just want to make clear that with that approval, while the condition will ultimately, you know, require dropping down to seven units an acre, as applicant has agreed to tonight, it'll be a little bit of a broader condition if you see it move forward to the town councils. I just want to make that clear, that it's, it's not a simple condition with that.
Board Member Powers?
You, you say that you're going to have to change the conditions in the, in the plan for this. What I'm hearing when you say that is the plan that was worked out, the numbers that were worked out in that plan are going to change because of, of one project. And going forward, the next ones that come in are, are going to use the, the criteria that, the adjusted criteria. Is, is that what we're doing here?
No, just for this project, Mr. Bennett's motion was to add a condition limiting the density to seven. So for this project, oh, I was just pointing out that following this meeting, and I would probably ask the planning board if you move forward with that motion, just to broaden it out a little bit, that, you know, staff and the applicant work together to add a condition limiting the density to seven units per acre. We'll, we'll have to work out the exact wording and, and it'll impact, you know, it'll, it'll equate to a new master plan, a new narrative coming out a little bit to be revised, whether it's before council approval or after council approval. But I just wanted to point that out that.
Okay, no, the thing that I was, I was confused on, it, what I heard was, we'll change the plan, the 2045 plan a little bit, and going forward, it, it would be these new numbers.
No, if the.
It's just for this one project.
Yeah, this project, based on the motion, this project would be limited to seven units per acre density. But then if it is, if that is approved by town council with that limit, with that seven unit per acre density, then we will be amending the growth plan just for this one parcel or these two parcels, three parcels that are part of this project. They will show up in the growth plan as being high density, but it will not change the, the future density of the areas around them.
Thank you.
Thank you. So do you believe that Board Member Bennett needs to modify his motion to include the comments that you made?
Um, no, I mean, I think the, the motion will, will stand and just, I just want the board to understand that it'll, going forward to town council, it'll, there'll be a little bit more meat to that condition than, than just limiting it to seven units per acre.
We're ready for the vote. Based on the comments, I'm, I'm asking everybody that's in favor to raise your right hand so I can count. All those in favor, please raise your right hand of the motion. All those opposed? We have a tie.
So with that, the motion fails. And so you can either entertain another motion, you can table this item, or you can also let this item proceed, you know, direct the item to proceed to town council without a planning board recommendation.
Thank you. Motion fails. Do we have a, another motion to either recommend or not recommend 2, 5C 2021-90-CZM-Ramblewood Village?
Let me say this, if we, if we don't pass it or fail it, if we're hung, hung jury here, it could proceed to the town, obviously, without our recommendation or our recommendation to oppose. At that point, the town could approve it at the 7.9. Is that correct?
Correct.
If I can remind.
Please speak into the microphone.
Yes, thank you. My, my point was just that I wanted to lower it to seven because there's no guarantee that anyone else will be able to lower it to anything else. Like Mr. Dupree said, you know, if, if we don't take any action on this, that is still a form of action, and the town can decide what the town's going to decide whether or not we make any recommendations.
And what I was saying was, I only opposed because of my concerns with the pollution for the NC State part and the safety, so.
Maybe Mr. Bizzle could speak on that a little bit more.
Yeah, thank you very much. And we are prepared to add another condition on the pollution potential that we will, and I'm not sure how we would award this, but we will go beyond the state and local minimums on stormwater control and erosion and sedimentation control to assure that that pond is protected. I'd spoken with Miss Askew earlier, and I understand they will, they being NC State, will be doing monitoring periodically on that. We, per the, our NPDS permit, will have to monitor after every rainfall as well. If, we would be amenable to a condition stating what we've just said, to where we are bound to do that, be willing to work with staff on the design criteria that they would like to see as well. And we can also make a proposal on our plans, so point well taken, and we're, we're ready to, to agree to that.
Board Member Powers?
Mr. Howell, it was my understanding, if we voted to approve this, it went on to town council. If we voted to say no, we don't want to approve this, it would still go on to town council.
That's correct.
And they would do what they want to do.
That's correct. I mean, they would, of course, receive the full record of your meeting here tonight, and, and we do have a council member here who has been listening very closely.
So just by us turning this down or passing it, we're giving them, as, as you have said, made a recommendation, they're, they're still going to listen or read what we've said and do what they want to do.
That's correct.
Any other comments from the board? I'd like to make a comment, especially for the new board members. The high density is where we've been as a town, and in the 2045 plan with the three to five units of acre, I think the town was trying to move into the future. And looking at the overall economics, as you know, there's this term workforce homes or starter homes, and, and everybody needs to start. We all had to start. We all had our starts. But for communities, just like if you look at most communities, when you have a large subdivision, you have homes in several different price points, because what you, what you ultimate a desire is for the residents to remain in Clayton. We want people to come to Clayton, but as their economics increase over time, we want them to be able to turn over that first home into a second or third home in Clayton, live for 30, 40 years. We realize as a town that we were building in the entry level homes, and with people, even if they wanted to live in the Johnston County or the Clayton area for that second or third home, they had to go out towards 42, whether it was 42 Flowers Plantation or 42 towards Cleveland, to get that second or third home. And the design of this plan was to keep those residents and getting developers to build more of estate type subdivisions and larger homes in Clayton. So these young, young adults coming in, single or with one child, as their families grew, as their incomes increased, that they would remain town of Clayton residents. And I wanted to say, and I do appreciate Board Member Bennett's perspective, but eventually, as a town, if we want to grow, we have to have homes in all price points. So you do have high density, but there has to be an evolution. You have to have a starting point. And if we keep going back, when would the starting point happen? So if we, if we enact in favor of this, when would the starting point happen? 10 years from now, 15 years from now? So you have to have a starting point. The 25, 2045 plan was our starting point. And that's my only concern. If you keep looking back, we, we won't evolve for another decade or more, which means the overall economics of the town of Clayton won't grow as much as some of our surrounding areas. Because if you look at surrounding towns, our adjacent neighbors, Knightdale, we look at, we look at Wendell, we see the large subdivisions with multiple price points, from estate homes to entry level homes to retiree communities, all in one subdivision. That's what I believe we want, our town council wants for Clayton. That's just my perspective. Now, I will, if there are no more comments from the board, I will entertain a motion to recommend or not recommend 5C 2021-90 CZM-Ramblewood Village.
I make a motion to recommend on the condition that it be reduced to seven units per acre, and that the developer ensures that there is no pollution in neighboring properties.
We have a motion by Board Member Bennett. Do we have a second? We have a second by Board Member Williams. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed, please raise your right hand. The, the yeses have it, the motion passes. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is 5Z 2021-20-CZM-Country Lane Conditional Zoning. We are now here for staff.
So this case is 2021-20-CZM-Country Lane Conditional Zoning District to Master Plan. The request is to rezone properties from P, from planned development residential zoning district to conditional zoning residential district. One note, the planned, planned development residential zoning district is no longer in use. So what that means is that this property formerly was approved and rezoned for a planned development that was then never, either the planned development itself was not approved but the rezoning was, or it did not develop according to the planned development in time, or they've decided to come back with a conditional zoning. So again, the conditional zoning, if approved, would allow for up to 299 units. They're proposing all single family homes at a density of approximately 2.6 units per acre. It's a little, it's 114.81 acres, and it's located on Country Lane, northeast of the intersection of Country Lane and Jasper Drive. On your screen here is the overall site plan or the master plan. As you can see here, the areas in orange would be where the homes would be, the areas in green would be preserved open space or natural area, and they are proposing to have an access on Country Lane itself, as well as a connection to Hunter Drive and, or Hunter Lane and Lynn Way. And then they are also proposing a modified cross section for the road that crosses the two streams to provide a median divided roadway there for, to provide for better emergency As mentioned, the proposed use is residential at approximately 2.6 units an acre for a maximum of 299 units. They will have a full access connection on the Country Lane, as well as connections to Hunter Lane and Lynn Way. Water and sewer will be provided by the town of Clayton, and electric will be provided by Duke Energy. The development is proposed to be completed in three phases. You'll see their proposed dimensional standards there. The biggest takeaway from that is that the interior lots are proposed to be an average minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet with lots along the boundary of the development adjacent to other residential developments would be a minimum lot size of 8,000 square feet. They are going, they are proposing to make transportation improvements on Barber Mill Road at Amelia Church, at Amelia Church Road, improvement on Amelia Church Road to Barber Mill Road, and then turn lanes also on Barber Mill Road at Country Lane. The project will comply with town of Clayton stormwater ordinance, public water is available along Country Lane. They will extend public sewer throughout the site and construct a new pump station near the bottom of the site to serve the development and electric services available from Duke Energy. The development will consist of approximately 45 acres of open space, including, that consists of protected wetlands, streams, riparian buffers, and floodplains. There will also, in addition, be neighborhood amenities, including a fitness recreation center, and additional amenities per the condition in your packet, as well as a greenway and public utility easement that will be. that will be dedicated along the eastern boundary of the property. This development will also provide a 15-foot wide type C landscaping buffer with opaque screening. They will choose between, by ordinance, they have a choice between a wall, a fence, an evergreen hedge, berm, or a combination thereof, any of which must be six feet at installation. As well as street trees will also be provided, meeting the UDC requirements. The applicant has provided some example elevations in the packet and the development will follow the 2006 design guidelines. As far as the criteria, the 2040 growth plan calls for this area to be low density residential up to three units an acre. The 2045 growth plan calls for this area to be three to five units an acre at medium density residential. So the development is consistent with the growth plan. The current zoning of the project is PDR, which is no longer in use. It was, as I mentioned, it was previously approved as a planned development. The proposed conditional district permits only residential uses and the applicant is proposing to connect to public water and extend public sewer to serve the development. The proposed use improves the balance of uses meet specific demand in town by proposing suburban style residential development in an area that is currently surrounded by residential uses and residential development. The development is proposed to be served by West Clayton Elementary, Clayton Middle and Clayton High Schools. Based on the most current CAP school list, Clayton High School is the only school on that list that is currently on Johnston County's CAP schools list for 2021 to 2022. And I will make a comment on the schools note. The other thing to remember is that these are yearly CAP schools list. This development, as well as the one before, is, you know, will likely take at least one to two years for either construction to begin or for build out. So that very well may change between now and then. As far as roads, the development will be accessed by Country Lane, Hunter Lane and Lynn Way. And with additional road network internal to the development, the development will be, is proposed to be served by public sewer with a new pump station constructed to serve the development. And it is, the development is subject to the Town wastewater allocation policy and has proposed to score enough points to be granted wastewater allocation by the Town Council. The public water is available along Country Lane and the development will follow the Town stormwater ordinance. All town ordinances, procedures and approvals will be followed so legal purposes of zoning are not contravened. As far as effect on adjoining property enters, the development will have a 15-foot landscape buffer with an opaque screening. They will also preserve existing wetlands, streams and floodplains. And there is a condition requiring that lots adjacent to existing development be minimum 8,000 square feet in size. And with the imposed conditions, staff does not believe there will be any detriment to the general public. Again, you have the master plan approval criteria as well. Staff believes that the applicant has met this criteria through the master plan, master plan narrative and proposed conditions. Considerations for the planning board. Again, the planning board shall make recommendations to the Town Council. The conditional zoning district master plan and narrative will be recorded if it is approved. And the approval will run with the land and not expire. And then the, as always, planning board may recommend conditions to be revised, added or approved with applicant agreement. Speaking of conditions, as I mentioned before, the first three are sort of our standard conditions that you saw in the last case as well. Condition four, limits permitted uses in development to single family house, park, fitness recreation center and utility minor. That utility minor use is specifically in there to allow for the pump station development. The following standards will apply. Limit of maximum number of single family homes will be limited to 299 with a maximum density of 2.6 dwelling units per acre. Interior lots will average of 6,000 square foot lot size and adjacent project boundary lots will be a minimum of 8,000 square feet. All under dimensions and under dimensional standards, setbacks shall meet the requirements in the approved master plan narrative. A minimum of 45 acres of the site will be comprised of open space and at least 50% of the required recreation open space will be part of a contiguous parcel to the development. A one acre site will be designated for a fitness recreation center for the development. At least one of the following amenities will be included in the development, a pool, splash pad, playground or clubhouse. And then at least two of the following amenities will be included in development. That's, they'll have a choice between a great lawn, picnic shelter, pavilion, fire pit or dog park. Those two conditions, again, are specifically referencing back to the wastewater allocation because they are getting points for providing up to three, for providing three residential amenities. Condition 11 is that a two lane median divided residential collector's street will provide access from the northern phases to the southern phase of the development, acting as two means of access in the event of emergencies while also minimizing environmental impacts. This condition is specifically related to a requirement in our code and the FIRE code that states that over a certain number of homes, you have to have two separate means of access. And so that is how they are meeting that for this, for Phase Three of the development. They also have roadway improvements listed here on Barber Mill Road and Amelia Church Road as well as Barber Mill Road at Country Lane Road, primarily turn lanes at both those intersections. No more than 30 sort of ghosts of occupancy will be issued within the development before the second required access point is constructed. And these next two conditions are related to the sewer. Condition 14 is that the development will be responsible for the installation of a public sanitary sewer system that will serve up to 299 residential units in Country Lane, including the installation of a pump station and approximately 8,000 linear feet of forced main sewer. Easements will be provided for the public utilities that are installed outside of public right of way per Town of Clayton requirements. Condition 15 states that the development shall dedicate a greenway and public utility easement along the entire eastern property boundary for the future construction of a greenway and sewer utilities. The final location of the easement shall be based on coordination with town staff. The greenway and public utility easement shall be at least 20 feet wide with a minimum 20-foot wide access to the easement shall be provided from the pump station area. This condition 15 is related both to the sewer but also to the fact that we do have a planned greenway shown in this area on our growth plan. And so we are, we have worked with the developer to ensure that we will get a greenway easement in that area. Condition 16 is regarding construction of the greenway and that greenway easement. The development can either construct it or provide a payment in lieu for construction. They also have the option of constructing the greenway now in a dedicated 20-foot easement. And if they construct the greenway now and dedicate 20-foot easement, they will have to provide a separate 20-foot easement for the public utility sewer forced main in the future. Next, condition 17 is that the development shall construct at least two connections to the greenway easement. One connection shall be in Phase Two and one connection shall be in Phase Three. That would allow for easy access to that future greenway from the development as well as also allow for a potential loop for future residents in that development to use the greenway as well as internal town roads. Then, condition 18 is that, this is related, again, to the wastewater allocation scoring criteria, but a minimum of four different home plans with a minimum of two different elevations will be provided to add variety to the neighborhood. And no home can be constructed with an exterior elevation or front facade or color palette that is identical to the home on either side or directly across the street from it, again, providing that variability as you ride down the street. The condition 19 is just related to the fact that the elevations provided are representative and may change. But the developer is saying that they will build, you know, something similar to what they've provided in the packet and they can speak more to that. Condition 20 is requiring that all homes will have two car garages. And then condition 21 is related, again, to that sustainable, high efficiency appliance. And they just, in this particular case, they have listed out all the different options or appliances that they will be using. Condition 22 is related to the 15-foot wide type C landscape buffer. Condition 23 is that they will provide a minimum of 30 Ever Flow parking spaces spread throughout the development. And condition 24 is the standard condition that to any extent of any conflict between the master plan, master plan narrative and these conditions, these conditions shall control. With that, staff recommends approval of 2021-20 CZM Country Lane Conditional Zoning District Master Plan, subject to the 24 recommended conditions of approval. Staff has also provided a proposed consistency statement since, and this project is consistent with both the 2040 and 2045 growth plan. The applicant and members of their development team are here and I believe will, would like to speak. And there may also be members of the public that would like to speak.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Thank you. We're now here from the applicant.
Good evening, Chair Moore and members of the planning board. My name is Brandi Vega. I'm a certified planner with Withers Revell. This evening, I am here with Arnaldo Acevaria, a professional engineer, also with Withers Revell. And we have representatives from Mungo Homes, who is the builder and developer and the applicant. And first, we want to thank the Town of Clayton staff for their assistance in picking this project back up after some staff turnover to bring this project before you tonight. As staff mentioned, this property is zone PDR. And to give you a little history, this site has an approved subdivision and a Town Council resolution granting wastewater capacity and an annexation. The approved subdivision and the resolution granting sewer wastewater capacity were approved in 2006 and the annexation was approved in 2007. Since then, the subdivision plans have expired. And with the adoption of the required 160D amendments to your Unified Development Code, Section 155, 109(c)(3) has converted PDRs into conditional zoning districts. And that still does not solve the problem of the expired subdivision plan. And that is why we are here before you tonight seeking a rezoning to conditional zoning R. We first came in with a rezoning in 2020, but we're asked to wait until the adoption of 160D amendments in 2021 so we could offer a conditional zoning to provide some assurance and some conditions that would limit the uses to single family. I believe we were originally looking at an R8 which allowed multifamily and staff was concerned that that coming through without conditions would not be well received. So we have offered zoning conditions that would limit the uses. And as such, you will see that this site only proposes to include single family homes, an amenities center and recreational opportunities for the residents as well as a greenway easement to provide the town the greenway. And the greenway will either be constructed or we will pay a fee in lieu for that greenway. Transportation improvements will focus on two key intersections, the Barber Mill Road and Country Lane intersection as well as the Amelia Church Road and Barber Mill intersection. We have been proactive in offering conditions that have addressed concerns raised by staff. And together, we have mutually agreed to conditions that will make this a better development for the Town of Clayton and for the future residents of the subdivision. As locally owned companies, Withers Revell and Mungo Homes want to continue to build our relationship with the Town of Clayton and to continue to be part of this town's success. We do understand that you may have some questions for us. So rather than repeating a lot of items that Ben may have already gone over, we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions of the applicant? Board Member Dupree?
And this may be a question more for Ben. He may know the answer. I know in the TIA at Barber Mill and Amelia, turn lane going south, turn lane going east from the Amelia side. TIA indicated that there was already, the criteria was being met traffic wise for there to be a traffic light there. And so obviously, there would not be one required of you to put one in at your expense because it's already there. Does the town have any teeth to getting the state to guarantee that when these lanes are put in, they'll put a light there?
Short answer is no.
What's the likelihood maybe?
Pretty low. Traffic signals can be difficult to get. As, you know, as you mentioned, the TIA did show that there was, a traffic signal is currently, or at least some of the warrants for a traffic signal were currently met at that intersection. That's just one of the things that the state looks at. So I will say, generally speaking, for putting in new traffic signals, the state takes a long time to decide to do that. Generally, they'll wait until there's a specific issue. And usually, it comes down to there needing to be a safety issue in order for the, a safety or a very strong mobility issue in order for the state to go and put in a signal. So.
Well, I know right hand turns are no big deal anywhere for the most part. But if there's going to be a left turn lane there coming from Amelia going back, and this is obviously how a lot of people who work in Raleigh and come back to the subdivision would come through down Guy Road and turn on Amelia and come that way. That's going to be a very difficult left turn.
Yeah, I mean, as always, town staff will continue to work with NC DOT as we, you know, look and find issues like that and will advocate for that. But just knowing how NC DOT works and their funding issues that they, their known funding issues they have, it can be very difficult to get installation of a traffic signal.
Thank you. Any other questions of the applicant? Do you have anybody else on your team that's speaking?
Our team is here that can answer questions if you have any.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any member of the public that would like to make a comment? Yes, sir. Please state your name and address.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Sam Saleen. I live in Horseman's Ridge on Equine Lane. I back up straight to that creek on that map right there. I've been living in Horseman's Ridge for 24, 25 years. There are several members here too that have been there that long. And we've actually stood here about three other times since 2007, which is why it's been an ongoing thing. We've kept making the right cases for it. I'm here to make some of those cases, although I'm very encouraged, this looks a whole lot better than some of the other plans we've seen. But the concerns I have are, and I'm sure several members here also have, I was actually a victim of a dam flood upstream from that road that he mentioned further up. It flooded my, I've got four, four and a half acres. It flooded the whole horse pasture and into the garage, about that deep. I actually called the Town of Clayton. Nobody did anything about it, but they said that fixed the dam. So with an additional infrastructure there, the likelihood is not less but more, just by logic. Oops. But I'm here tonight to share three concerns and one very simple win-win solution that'll make this all real. The first challenge is water quality, flooding, slope, density. My background is former NC State civil engineering hydrology. That's my background or my schooling. I actually went into IT, but anyway. So this gives me a chance to bring that all back. I'm sure there's some point source solutions for drainage from the Army Corps of Engineers all come out with boots. And we've hiked that area over the last, since 2007. And then we've studied, we did EIS, environmental impact statements, wetlands and so forth and so on, the flora biota. All of them said, yes, this should be reclassified as a blue line stream. It has been, which increases the riparian buffer. However, because it's a 40% grade, it's not flat. However, because it's a 40% grade, it's not flat, so it's not a, the riparian buffer really doesn't look good logically because the grade takes away from the buffer. So my win-win idea is if you move the plan and use that central line of that, the central line currently for the buffer is used as the creek. But if you take that to the top to where there is no 40% grade and then use the buffer distance from there, this will work. Now, that's the first challenge. Second challenge is protected species. We've, there are several pallated woodpecker nests up. It's an old growth. I don't know if you're familiar with it. It's one of the oldest old growth areas in all of Clayton and even beyond. I've got a 400-year-old tree in my yard that could be classified as a historic tree. So there's a lot of old growth forests right there. And so those nests have been identified and they are them. They do go beyond that ridge. That's why it's called Horseman's Ridge, is a ridge. The other thing is, and this is the third thing that hasn't, that I've not ever brought up before, because we've always kind of never needed it. Because there's always item number one and item number two that always sealed the deal here last several times. This third thing is of a historical, cultural, and heritage concern. There are several Indian burial grounds from the Tuscarora Tribe. We've hiked them, we've seen them, we've picked up arrowheads just out of, you know, oh, huh, you know, wasn't, but over the years, it's never stopped. There's always something to find, and there's always been these mounds. So I have since, I think, the last time we were here and it got canceled was 2000, what, 2017?
I think so.
A year ago or maybe two?
That was, yeah.
Anyway, so I had done some research in preparation for that meeting, but it got canceled. So I was like, okay, well, whatever. But I still have that research and people I've contacted. The chief of the Tuscarora Tribe said that, yes, absolutely, there's a lost tribe that lived on, the tributaries that went to the Falls of Newse Basin and on high ground and in this area. I sent him pictures of the mounds. He says, absolutely, those look like Tuscarora mounds. And I know that David here can talk about some structures, actual walls that have been built there. So these are all things that need to be considered from a cultural heritage and historical standpoint. Because whoever lives there can actually benefit from that being there if they were a little bit further away so that it doesn't get disturbed. So the win-win there, just in summary, I think, is to just simply move the central line of the riparian buffer instead of using the creek, is to use the top of the ridge and move it back some. It's a simple thing to do. Yes, it takes some work, but in light of what would be accomplished by doing that, I think it might be beneficial to approach this project with that in mind. That's what I have to share tonight.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you, sir. Any other member of the community, of the public would like to speak?
I'm David Cawthorn, and I live on 3109 Horseshoe Lane. And so my whole back of my property lines up to that creek. I'm going to go along with the concerns that Mr. Saleen had. We've had just, the wildlife that's in those woods and around that creek is incredible. It's full of fish. It's got, we've got raccoons and possums, of course, that kind of thing. We've got the birds he talked about. We used to have, I'm going to back up a second, when they were building Lynn Drive back whenever that was, that was when they were looking at the Thompson, Bobby Thompson was going to build in that area and in the area you were talking about now. It had the EPA come out and look at some of the things, you know, the plants that are in the area and that kind of stuff. And he walked up the creek and the end of Lynn Drive, they were not holding their sediment in at all. They didn't have a, they didn't have a fence put up, the berm fence, and the sand was just running into the creek. We used to have black mussels all in that creek. We used to have a heron that roosted right on my property. We'd see them in there every day, sometimes two or three of them eating these, going after these black mussels. The mussels are practically gone. They were gone for a while, and now I'm starting to see a few of them come back. But I was due to them getting choked out by all the sand that came down into that creek. We have barred owls out there. I don't know if you guys have heard of a barred owl call, but if you Google it, it's really interesting. I put a speaker on my deck one time and played it off my barred owl call, and I had eight of them show up in the woods behind me. It was really pretty spooky, honestly. But the wildlife back there is incredible. I'm really worried about anything coming from the top of that ridge down into that creek. That's what bothers me the most. The traffic patterns and stuff are not going to affect me as much as the people on Country Lane and Lynn Drive and those areas. I do think that's something we should consider. But for me, it's the wildlife and the environment protection that we need right there. The name of that creek is Cabin Branch Creek, and it connects to Little Creek. And Cabin Branch is a, it's a beautiful little place, but it could get ruined if the project's not done correctly. So that's my main concern about it.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Thank you, sir.
David, just remind me of something. I've got a 24-year, I'm a big-time photographer. I love photography and nature. I'm an outdoors guy. But I actually have an archive of what's been happening with the creek over these years. And to what he was talking about, sedimentation and turbidity has gone through the roof with that other project that's not colored in. I know there's a road there waiting to be connected to some other road, but that road, that development has caused gravel that's all the same size, so it has the same sieve size, which means it was used for a certain purpose in that project, and it got dumped in creek. And you can tell where the creek bends, the banks are different. So yes, we've lost some mollusks, but the flora biota, there's haggis, there's a lot of indicators of water quality, which is what made Deener, when they came out there and Army Corps of Engineers reclassified as a blue line stream, because you've got haggis fly, larvae, and you've got mollusks, and you've got crayfish even, like big crayfish. So that sedimentation, turbidity, the murkiness from the other project is just going to be worse here unless we take that approach of moving that buffer instead of the center line, move it from the top of the ridge out. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, sir. Any other member of the public? Yes, sir.
Good evening, y'all. My name is Joseph Brown. I live at 3112 Horseshoe Lane in Horseman's Ridge. And I kind of have some of the same concerns about the flooding. I tried to talk to Withers Ravenel when they had the phone meeting two years ago, and the only thing you could get from them was, well, we're following the Johnston County plan. That's great. And I mean no disrespect to y'all, but I don't believe anybody from this board or anybody from the town has been out and actually walked that property and seen the erosion of that hill that's back there, about 70 feet high in some places. And you're going to put 300 more homes there that are going to flood down the side of that hill and flood everybody that's in Horseman's Ridge. On top of that, you're talking about 300 more homes for kids to go to West Clayton Elementary or Clayton Elementary, I'm sorry. And I have a grandson going there now. I have to go there two hours early in the afternoon to pick him up, or you're sitting in the middle of 42 in a car line, just waiting for somebody to hit you because the speed limit says 35. Not anybody runs 35 on 42. It's 50, 60, 70 miles an hour out there. I really would like to show y'all some pictures of the flooding, if y'all ever would like to see them, on just a normal summer rain. The creek becomes 100 feet wide back there. I don't know how they plan to put a greenway back there unless they're going to put it on the edge of the cliff and you're going to have to worry about people falling off of it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Really appreciate it. Yes, sir.
My name is Eric Janis. I'm, I live at 2829 Horseman's Ridge Drive. I think I have the property at the corner, two corners down the property. Is there a way to move this forward? Can we see where the water runs down at the base of the hill? I think we, you had a picture of it somewhere. They have that big blue, that big blue area, isn't that, is that the creek? No.
That's Little Creek.
That's okay. Well, thank you very much. I do have a number, a couple of questions and comments to make. First of all, I'm interested in how we calculate density for construction because I think, is it based on the total acres of the property or the buildable acres on the property? If I have a, buy a 100-acre lot that's 90% wetland, can I put 500 houses on those 10 acres? So I do have a question as to how we calculate our density for how we allow houses to build. I do think that the topography of this property is not well illustrated on the maps here. This is a very steep slope from the existing, as everyone has indicated, that flows directly down into the Cabin Branches Creek and Little Creek, which my understanding are tributaries of the noose and do run into the noose at some point. The back of this property is already in the 100-year flood plain. And any additional runoff into the Little Creek that causes it to overflow will exacerbate the risk of severe flooding. And I think one of the criteria for this is that it does not impact flooding or not theoretically cause flooding for other property owners, or does not directly impact the properties of others. And by increasing the likelihood of severe flooding and turning it from 100-year, from 100-year event to a 10-year event, is actually directly impacting all of our neighbors. I'm interested in how we will mitigate the runoff. I think there's tremendous runoff. It's a very steep slope going down from where this property is to be developed down to the creek. And these folks who have addressed you here all are directly on the creek, so every time it raises, it is in their backyard. I've had my personal property flooded as well from Hurricane Floyd, Hurricane Freya. And I also have a question as to whether Barbara Mill Road will be expanded prior, I think there was a comment here about Barbara Mill Road being expanded to accommodate extra turn lanes. And I think it says before any construction can occur, Barbara Mill Road will need to be expanded. So I wanted to make sure that that is actually part of the, part of the plan here. We have a major development which took place a couple of years ago on Derrick Road. They tore up the road. I presume it was to actually expand the road or do something to the road. We have yet to see any change in that particular road. So I am, I do think this, this property with the topography of the land and the impact on the stream is absolutely going to have a downstream effect and a significant effect on the property values and the safety of people in the Horseman's Ridge community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other member, any other member of the public would like to speak?
I just want to speak to one more point. Mr. Saleen talked about the Indian burial mounds. There is a, that whole hill that we're talking about, that's 60 or 70 feet tall right behind my house. It seems strange that it would be like that in Clayton because Clayton's pretty flat. But this is 60, 70-foot tall hills, taller than my house. And it's, the whole place is just quartz with trees growing in it. I mean, it's dirt, obviously, there's soil, but when you go and you see these burial mounds, they're oval shapes about this big of quartz rocks piled on top of each other. And my son just told me, he's been with me, well, we've been there since 2001. He explored those woods all the time. He said, there's one that's not been used that, it's the shape, and it's lined with quartz on the inside, but no one's in it, and there's no, there's no rocks on top of it. It's just a very historic site. And I think it would do, it might do Clayton some good to make it a walkway of some sort out there, you know, make some sort of nature trail that people could look and go down and maybe find those, find those burial mounds and mark them. I think that'd be pretty cool.
Thank you, sir. Yes, excuse me. Just one moment. Yes, ma'am. I just want to give her a chance to speak.
Hi, I'm Betsy Clark, and I live on the other end of the development off of Canyon Road. And Little Creek goes through my property, so I've seen it flood. I've lived there since 93, and I've seen it flood over the years. You know, like you were saying, the storms always bring that. But when the new development came in, it takes just a little bit of rain and that water level comes way up. So I know all those hard surfaces and rooftops are really affecting that. And I would like to say, too, it is the most beautiful place, and I think it would be a great idea for it to be a preserve area that people could enjoy. Another effect it's had, I'm the crazy cat lady. I've lived there since the early 90s, and I've had outdoor cats the whole time. Just over the past couple of years, the coyotes have started coming through, never before. And I just feel like the more we keep putting all of these developments into the natural areas, we have to do something to control the wildlife at the same time. The deer aren't a nuisance, but the coyotes are.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm one of those guys that, you know, thoughts just enter my mind and I talk. So in my several years of researching, just because I'm a historic buff, too, history buff, too, a senator's son reached out to me about the Indian burial grounds and put me in touch with a chief of the Tuscarora Tribe. And that's when I sent pictures and all that. So that's all stuff I can put into, I just found out about this meeting Friday. So I didn't know, I didn't get a mailing. So I'd be happy to put this in a package with references and pictures from five years ago, 10, 20 years ago of the creek. And, but anything to help you. If you take an area, which I'm sure you have of Clayton, the biggest green, beautiful spot in Clayton isn't Clayton Park, it's this area right here. And it's just gorgeous, and you've already heard from all of us, so I know you'll make the right decision. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Any other member of the public would like to speak?
My name's Vicente Torres, and I stay in 439 Country Lane. The only concern of mine is traffic. I don't, this is my first time I've ever been to a meeting like this. I've been there for four years. I don't know if the other map that was on there are the blue lines, the roads, is that what's going to connect to Country Lane? Reason being, Country Lane being so small, and like he said, everybody going to be in Clayton Middle, West Clayton Middle and the elementary Clayton School. I have two daughters there. I have one in West Clayton Middle. And like he says, traffic there on 42 is crazy. You can sit there for a long time. People start cutting through the gas station. People start cutting through the gas station to get on Barber Mill. What's gonna happen with that? You know, everybody on that development is gonna get on Country Lane now to get onto Barber Mill? Is that road gonna be bigger? Is it, what's gonna happen? That's my only concern about traffic. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other member of the public would like to speak? Well, thank you. I'll turn it over to the board for their consideration. Are there any comments from the board? Mr. Howell, I have one question. Somebody mentioned a dam. Is it an earthen dam or is it a mechanical dam?
Unfortunately, I'm not aware, and I'm not real familiar with the dam in this area. I would assume it would be somewhere around the creeks or maybe related to one of those ponds shown. But I'm not familiar enough with the area to know what dam they may be speaking of.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Yes. Board Member Begley?
I just have a question. With all of the natural wetlands and area that seems to be what these folks are speaking of, was there, was there any research done? Was there any, you know, observation of the land? And do we know it's buildable and we know it's secure and, you know, could withstand additional housing?
Yeah, for that, I'll let the applicant respond to that or the applicant's team.
Thank you, Ben. Good evening, everybody. My name is Arnaldo Echevarria, engineer with Witherspoon Enel. We do have determination from the Army Corps of Engineers and the state for the streams shown in the drawings. And to answer the question the gentleman had earlier, these buffers that are shown on the plans are actually offset not from the center line of the streams, but from the top of bank on each one of those. We're considering them as part of the development, building on the higher ground, of course. We have to look out for our client, and building in lower wet areas is not, is not efficient for multiple reasons, environment, cost, accessibility, and erosion control, because it's more complicated as well. So the plan that you see on the screen has gone through some refinement recently as we keep working on the design. And I can speak that as of right now, we are proposing four separate stormwater control measures along the eastern boundary of the site, which has been noted as the area of main concern from flooding standpoint. Those will control the runoff to existing conditions, meaning, you know, if there's two cubic feet per second leaving the site at a specific point, then that's what's gonna leave the site after development is completed for the one-year, two-year, 10- and 25-year And, you know, we're definitely taking all that in consideration also from a construction phase standpoint by proposing all necessary measures for erosion and sedimentation control, not only on that part of the site, but throughout the development. I'm here to answer any further questions.
Is there, I'm just trying to, I just heard the word dam earlier, and I just wanted to make sure, is there a private dam on the property or?
There is an existing pond, is, has been, it has been determined to be jurisdictional, but not subject to repairing buffers. It was not determined to be a hazard when we did the initial studies on the site, and the point is to remain.
All right. Thank you.
It's not going to be utilized for stormwater runoff detention purposes. It's just going to remain on site.
All right. Thank you.
So I'm assuming the dam in question is that existing pond in the middle of the site, which, hard to tell from looking at the image, but it's literally the center of the site.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Any other questions for the applicant, for the members of the board?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Salim, we've turned it over to the board.
Sorry?
Please let this be your last time. We've turned it over to the board for consideration.
He said, I'm sorry, I can't remember the name, but he said that they took into consideration the research and reports. But as that road is connected to Hunter's Way, the way that it goes, the trajectory, that is actually, the Indian burial grounds are actually above that, so the ridge is above that. And the way that, I can see the road, the other road from my house, Hunter's Way, and it is kind of a cut and fill kind of, which is why the sedimentation in the creek. So that isn't taken into consideration, which is why we have the evidence of sedimentation and turbidity in there. So that road actually would, if it's built this way, you're going to be disturbing Indian burial grounds, in addition to all the other things that we talked about.
Thank you, sir. Are there any comments or questions from any member of the board? If not, I'll entertain a motion to either recommend or not recommend 5D 2021-DAS20-CZM
As much as I am a huge advocate for preserving wetlands and the wildlife and all of that, that is definitely, for me personally, a big deal. And so I respect what, you know, what you all have brought to the table here this evening. On the other side of the coin, it meets all of the requirements existing currently in not only the 2040 Growth Plan, but also the 2045 Growth Plan. Just a statement.
Board Member Powers?
I just, just wanted to say, as we discussed on the, on the item before this, whether this board decides to approve or not approve this project, it's, either way would go on to Town Council. And they would either look at our discussions, your discussions, and make up their own mind. So obviously, we're, we're not very strongly one way or the other. But if we, if we do not approve it, it's still gonna go to Town Council and, you know, they'll have their say at it. And that, I just wanted to say that for each side of everybody's out there.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Board Member Lee?
To the point of the artifacts or the burial grounds, has there been historic preservation studies on the property to look at those items in advance? If artifacts are found during development, that would be discovered and dealt with.
We did a Phase 1 environmental as required, but we can certainly review that Phase 1 and revisit the site.
I just seem to be like a big item of concern for the public here, so I just want to make sure that's addressed. I don't know the proper way to address.
Yeah, that's the first time we've heard of it, so it's, you know, hard for us to react to it right away, but we do, obviously, we don't want to disturb any burial grounds, so if there is something there, we certainly don't want to infringe upon that. So again, first time hearing it, so we will have to do some further investigation.
Any other comments from the board?
It was mentioned at one point that this may be related to the Tuscarora Tribe. It, I am of the opinion that if the Tuscarora Tribe has historical artifacts on this land, then it would be in the best interest of everyone involved to get a representative of the tribe to certify if that is the case. Because, I mean, we're sitting here, you know, we can't see the land in front of us right now, and I haven't personally seen anything to indicate that there is, you know, artifacts there. But on top of that, I'm not an archaeologist, I'm not a cultural expert, you know, I can't speak to the validity of these claims or the invalidity of these claims, you know, I'm not an expert on these things. But my assumption is that an archaeologist or a representative of the Tuscarora Tribe would be more equipped to inform us on that.
And that's the effect I want after this.
Can you repeat that?
I do have, if there's an email, a fax, I can send you what I do have. But my contacts for the Tuscarora Tribe wanted to know the outcome of this meeting. And then would be happy to do what it is you're asking because it is certainly something that we think that the town of Clayton can really benefit from too, as an, maybe as an attraction or, like, I think David, someone mentioned like a point of attraction or something.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments from the board? Mr. Board Member Gobernment Williams?
I also live on Hunter Way in Clayton, and so I understand the flooding issues.
Okay, you not hear me? Okay, sorry about that. I live on Hunter Way in Clayton, and so I understand your concern with the floods as well as, you know, preserving nature. So as we discussed earlier, we're here just to recommend, and we want to see Clayton grow, and that this area is as beautiful as we know it is. I would think that the developers and the people that are working will do everything that they can to reserve and make sure that the area is taken care of, like, so I live on Hunter's Way as well, so I'm very interested in seeing what happens.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, we discussed that with the 401, 404 permitting process that we are required to go through for the stream crossings, there is a SHPO review, so that's the State Historic Preservation Office.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And also to my fellow board members too, I want you to think about something. This has been going on and stated by the members of the community or the public for 15 years. So there's an indigenous tribe that had an interest in that property, they had 15 years to make a claim or request that state archives come in and investigate. So I think we need to move forward as a board, either to make a decision to recommend or not recommend. I think that's our duty tonight. Based on the information that we've received, we need to make a recommendation, a recommendation on not to recommend to the Town Council. So based off the information that we've received tonight, I'll entertain a motion to either recommend or not recommend 2021-DAS20-CZM Country Lane Conditional Zoning, Resoning to, zoning to the Town Council.
Let me say that I, I'm as sensitive to this area as anybody. Hunter Way, the hunter is my family. We relocated a family cemetery when Hunter Way was put in. It's where my family was buried, so we've been here a long time too. I'm as sensitive as anybody to the area, and I want it to stay looking good. But I think we do owe it to the, to the town as the planning board to either recommend or not to recommend. I think that that falls on us to do that, and in the interest of at least getting a vote, I will make a recommendation that we approve the proposal as written.
We have a motion made by Board Member Dupree. Is there a second?
Second.
Board Member Powers, second it. All, all in favor, say aye.
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 Noes, not in favor, say no. The motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. We really appreciate your input and your perspectives. The next item on the agenda is formal discussion and public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak at this time? The next item on the agenda is staff reports. Planning Director Howell?
Good evening. I'll try and make this quick since we're going for a marathon meeting here, but thank you for hanging in through this and, you know, hopefully it'll get a little bit easier as we move forward, but I appreciate your detailed deliberation on these two matters. Just want to give you a quick, a couple of quick updates about the department. We are almost at full staff. I have one position left to hire. I had my, another new staff member start today, so we, and we are doing interviews this week for the final position, so I'm hoping that within the next month or so, I can say we are at full staff and have everyone hired that we needed. Also wanted to let the planning board know that we are in the process of finalizing a contract for the Unified Development Code update project. We have selected a consultant and are working with that consultant on the contract scope and fee, and hope to have that information here shortly. Our goal right now is that we, is to hopefully be under contract with that sometime around the middle of the month. And I will be back certainly by the end of March with a, hopefully a more detailed update and, and give you, be able to give you a little bit of a timeline and better explanation of how you'll be involved in the project.
Thank you, sir. Any comments for Director Howell? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn?
Motion by Board Member Dupree. Do I have a second? I mean, Board Member Bennett, do I have a second? Second by Board Member Williams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you.